Hi Squail, I'll call the meeting to order. It's with great respect and humility that we acknowledge and honor the lands of the Sinamuk people. The Sinamuk people maintain their profound, unique and spiritual connection to the land through ageless traditions, teachings, stewardship and expressions of reciprocity. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. There should be relatively, well, two items on our agenda. Are there any additions, deletions or changes in order this evening? And if I could ask trustees to please use the chat if there are any. We'll give you a second. Yeah, I see that you're typing. Okay, thank you. So Leanne has moved the motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Chantel. Is anyone opposed to adoption of the agenda? And motion carries. Thank you. So we don't have any minutes, so we'll move on to committee reports under 6.1 with the Rutherford Elementary reopening. Mark?
Thank you Chair, and thank you just for this moment to briefly introduce the item. And I thank you, the Chair of the Business Committee, for letting me do so. I just do want to, trustees requested a version of the draft maps with respect to the proposed catchments to go for consultation that indicated where the, kind of the line of where the current maps are. We're still working out whether it'll be sufficient enough for the consultation and working with Ms. Robinson with respect to that. But you will see now embedded in the agenda, we just changed it a few minutes ago so the public could get access to it, another link that does show where the previous lines are, as well as it's zoomable on Google Maps with respect to that as well. So there's kind of a clean version as well as where those lines are overlaid so you can see what the kind of previous or the current catchments are. I'm happy to answer any questions with respect to this, except for I think it's important just to remind the board that the intent of the recommended motion coming from the Business Committee is not to make a final decision here. It is to go out to public consultation with the intent of closing it by the end of June to come back to the board after review in early, early fall if possible so we can get our community aware, fully aware. We'll say that staff have been invited to a number of schools. Unfortunately, I had to move the Frank Nae invite and thank you very much to the parents of that school for their understanding. We will be back soon to be able to answer their questions. And of course, we'll make ourselves available as needed. And this will be, you know, our new Executive Director of Communications helping lead this process and I'm looking forward to it in the event that the board proceeds. But happy to answer any questions. A very exciting time, trepidatious, but I think very positive for our community.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I just maybe start by thanking staff and the committee for the time that they've devoted to this project. And I look forward to hopefully moving forward with consultation. I see that Tanya wants to move the motion, but I'm gonna hold off for a moment and just give trustees an opportunity to ask questions first. Are there any questions about this item? Looks like I can come back to you then, can you? Go ahead.
Thank, thank you Greg. That the Board of Education of School District Number 68, and I'm a Lady Smith, approve and principal the Rutherford Working Group's reopening plan recommendations, the recommendations including the redrawn boundaries and transfer of students in the newly created Rutherford and Frank J. name boundaries and send the recommendations to the community for consultation with final approval in the fall of 2024.
Thank you, Tanya. And motion's been seconded by Mark Robinson. Would you like to motivate, Tanya?
Yes, please. First of all, I want to share that I too, to my appreciation for staff and for the committee and the work that they've done to put together this recommendation. I think it, this is a big change. I think that there's a lot of people who want, I know there are a lot of people who wanted Rutherford reopened for a while and were of course devastated when it closed. And I think it's important that we maintain our spirit of public engagement in making sure that as we take these steps, we are including the community all the way and finding out any questions and concerns they have so that we can do our best to address them. And I think this is the best way to go about that.
Thank you, Tanya. Are there anyone, are there any other trustees that would like to ask questions? I have one. And so through, I guess to staff and if you're not prepared to answer this right now, it's okay. I'm just curious as to what our thoughts are with respect to public engagement and what that process would look like.
Sure. So I will perhaps let Ms. Robinson come up if she'd like to speak to it. And again, I don't want to put her on the spot because we've just started discussing what this is going to look like. What I will highlight is one thing that we have talked about is we are focused on ensuring, often we kind of consult with our communities and we hear from the people that are impacted in their schools that are there now. And one of the challenges that we have in our current circumstance is it doesn't just impact people that are there now. It impacts people that might be there in two years, so that kind of our future families. And so we're putting our heads together on how we're going to be able to reach those folks to comment. But if Jillian's prepared to say a few words, great.
Sure. Thanks, Mark. I've been on the job for a week, but I can speak to previous community engagement experience that I have coming from municipal government. And we're looking to, first of all, provide information to families. And we do have a letter drafted that will go out this week to schools that are impacted. And then we'd be looking to have in-person opportunities, potentially online opportunity. And speaking to Mark's mention of families that aren't yet in the district and maybe in a year or two, we'd be looking to do some broader potentially media engagement to have good coverage in the local newspapers so people can find out the information that way. And then of course, it lives on our local media with the right information and directs people to places where on our website where they can find more information as well.
Thank you very much, Jillian. Welcome. Nice to see you here this evening.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, so moving on, question from Chantel.
Hi, thank you Greg. I think you actually kind of really asked that question already and staff has answered it to the best of their abilities. And that's just kind of what I was gonna ask is maybe in a little bit different ways. Is that feedback that we're getting from the public and stuff like that? Would I, I, because of such a kind of a quick turnaround time about getting, receiving that feedback, I'm hoping that there's gonna be, maybe not flexibility, but at least some some opportunity to sort of adjust a little bit. Is there? I'm not quite sure how to ask this question, Mark, and I hope you can read my mind at this point in time. But I'm hoping that the feedback can help inform, but also that it's, we don't have a lot of time to do a huge amount of changes to it as well, right? So kind of that reality of that.
So through Chair, so a couple of things. So the Committee wanted quick, not quick closure, because it's still, we're talking six weeks, but they want a closure by the end of the summer. They don't want the process to go further than that, which is great. So it gives us time. We've set the internal kind of clock ticking in the sense that the quicker people know, the better prepared we can be. But in reality, we do have theoretically until January to make a decision. So if major changes need to happen, I mean, there's only, there's really two big questions here, right? Is, you know, what, what is the bound, like what is the configuration and how do we make the kids flow? Or how do we get the kids to flow, right? So those are the big ones. And so there would be theoretically time if, if we need it. We don't want to take it if we, if we absolutely can avoid it. And the one, the one other thing to add to Jillian's comments too, by the way, is that part of our consultation, of course, is going to be promoting the heck out of the decision, right? It's the school's opening, however it's opening. And so it's a good news story for community. We're about to invest like a million dollars on top of the million dollars that already got invested in it. So it's a really good news for our community. And I know there's gonna be some, you know, we've got a couple of, we've got one major controversial recommendation or one recommendation that's gonna have, you know, some concerns associated with requirement to, to transfer. And so, but there's, there's, all that being said, there is time after September, October is the kind of when we want the decision made, but if it can't be, then it will go on. If we don't have it done by January, it's not getting done.
Yeah, yeah, it needs to be done by January. Families really need to prepare and, and everything. And I appreciate that kind of longer, a little bit of a longer term too, to, to get that feedback from public and everything and, and having that, that time afterwards to digest it and look at it and stuff. I see Laura's popped on, so.
Okay, so just, I'll let Laura speak and then, do you have a follow-up, Chantel?
No, no follow-up. Thank you, Mark, for that response. I appreciate that. Just sort of like clarifying a bit about the public consultation, the process and time, reminding folks what that's gonna look like. Thank you.
Thank you, through the Chair. I'll just add to the already beautiful responses that, you know, we've had some different experiences with public consultations around strat plan and those sorts of things that when we're looking at this particular situation, the consultation can and often does look different. So we know, you know, for example, the very specific schools that are impacted. You know, Mark referenced a very individualized, personalized meeting with the PAC of a particular school. And so there it is definitely a consultation process where those who are directly impacted, right, are given that voice and that audience. It's not, you know, without being sent into facetious, it's not sort of a survey that goes out to everybody and then we just take it and go sort of thing. It is very much a reciprocal back and forth process.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Laura.
Okay, are there any other trustees who would like to ask questions? I don't see any hands or anyone else in the chat, so I will call the question then. Anyone opposed to the motion, please indicate so in the chat. Okay, I don't see anybody typing. I don't see any opposed in the chat, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Naomi, did you pop up to, no? Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just arrived to the meeting. I just wanted everybody to see my happy smiling face. That's all.
Thanks, Naomi. Happy to see you too. Moving on then to item 7.1, the 2024-2025 Preliminary Annual Budget. Mr. Walsh?
Great. So thank you, Chair. And so this evening, you'll see recommended motions with respect to the passage of the budget bylaw. And you will note that somewhat different than in previous years, there's no recommendation with respect to all three readings in a single evening. So the idea, of course, is the board, you know, has some time to contemplate between the first and second reading and then come back for the third reading, I believe, at the next board meeting if this passes this evening. So just again, the high level is that we are in a fortuitous position with respect to some of our peers across the other school districts across the province who are facing inflationary pressures, who are facing significant costs associated with replacement issues, associated with benefits increases, as well as in some districts, just huge costs to buy portables is an example that is taking away much of their additional dollars that would have gone to support programming. And so even districts growing by huge numbers are still facing deficits in some certain circumstances. Couple of reminders though. One is our district is not proposing a local capital transfer in the preliminary budget. And so this is something that most, if not all districts do. And we, just like last year, rather than create a deficit situation because we would be in one if we were doing a local capital transfer. So this is to, you know, support technology purchase, to support other minor local capital items that we ultimately will require. But the reality is, is we did our Q3, our quarter three financials and we, we played that out to the end of the year and we feel like we're gonna be in a surplus position that we would be able to recommend to the board that they move the money in September rather than create a deficit, cut services now, we use surplus dollars to do that in, in September. Other thing, I really, you know, I will say that the, the finance, our finance team, myself included, is a little bit nervous about, we have not been conservative with respect to enrollment projections in our international program or in our domestic population, either nor with our students with diverse learning needs. And so this year, you're not seeing a huge fluctuation of losing a bunch of staff at this time of year and then, you know, adding back in September. And so the flexibility or the ability to kind of add some additional resource in September is really not gonna be there for us, at least on an, on an operating additional dollars basis. So heads up on that. So again, focusing today's dollars on today's kids, trying to have less layoff, particularly in our EA world, was something we heard from our community that was important and that that's what we went to. The last thing, well, actually, sorry, the second to last thing I'm going to point out because I'll never stop pointing it out, is this district is at a significant disadvantage with respect to our funding per student level associated with pay equity decision made 20 years ago, over 20 years ago. This district is losing millions of dollars that, that we are still spending. We still expend to make sure that we have pay equity in our system, but that we do not get the same benefit that other districts that took longer to achieve that, what is a social justice issue. And so I think it's important that whenever we talk about budget, we, we don't forget about that particular aspect. Finally, this is preliminary in nature. So every year, what, what the board votes on this evening and ultimately passes, it relates to what it looks like in January, but there's going to be a massive difference. So for instance, we don't have the COLA increases for our teachers or for any of staff in our budget. So that's gonna be multimillion dollars additional revenue from the ministry, multimillion dollar additional expense. If we have more students that come in September, we are going to have more revenues. We're going to have to provide more teachers and services to them. The board doesn't approve those expenditures. It kind of confirms them in next January. So the preliminary, we've made estimates on how many kids we're going to have. We made estimates on how many international kids, how many kids with diverse needs, what those funding levels are going to look like, what interest rates are going to look like. We've done all of that and that's the best guess because our fiscal doesn't even start until July, July the 1st. And so again, this is preliminary in nature and will change. If we, if we've overestimated students, we'll be back to the board saying in September, expressing concern. If we've underestimated, we'll be back to tell you that we've added more services to support them. So very preliminary in nature. And, and then just again, I do want to recognize Ms. Sutton and her team for the work they've done building this and just recognize the, how our learning services team, how our finance team, how our various departments are pulling together to connect directly the budget to the strategic plan. And I really want to express appreciation for that focus. So happy to answer any questions, but you'll see the recommended motions there this evening.
Thank you for that, Mark. Are there any questions for staff on the budget? Mark?
Thanks Greg. And yeah, thanks, Mark and Tanya and everyone in the finance department for, you know, what amounts, almost a quarter of a billion dollars come a long way in a hundred years where the budget was like around a million. So I'd like to acknowledge that first off, in the province, there are a lot of districts cutting back and we are blessed to have the staff that we have that are able to navigate through that to make sure that we are in the blue. My question is with regards to that specific. Mark, or maybe if anyone else is on. Last year, we had one of our staff members pull a rabbit out of a hat, so to speak, with regards to a class action lawsuit. And managed to do something really nice for the district in the amount of, I believe it was around a million dollars for tech. Does that have any effect in our budget this year and has that sort of put us, helped us put it, keep us in the black?
So through Chair, not, not particularly in the sense that there's limitations on hardware expenditures. And so certainly, certainly it has a positive budgetary implication. We're able to get professional development. We're able to get software support. We haven't taken that into account, but as noted, you will see the fact there is no local capital transfer. And so some of those expenditures may well end up there. I don't have the exact amount that we would have, we would have saved in that regard, but so apologies there.
Okay, yeah, no. Okay, thank, thank you very much. I was just curious how that might have impacted the budget, so. Okay, thanks.
Well, I just, maybe for, it's not necessarily directly related to the board but, or to the budget this evening, but I just want to say that our, our team is constantly looking for those similar opportunities with respect to class actions and our record keeping in our school district is impeccable. And so for instance, we're expect a hearty check from Apple coming up with respect to iPhones at some point. We don't know when that point is, but we're, we're on the lookout all the time.
Like the sound of that. Thank you so much, Mark, Tanya and everyone else who put this together and for that work, keeping all the records meticulously. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark and Mark. Moving on to question from Chantel.
Hi, unfortunately, it's a clarifying question from last meeting and I realize I didn't ask. I, I thought I understood the answer to the question, but I realized that I did not. And then I realized I had a little bit of follow-up question on that one. And that was in regards to the open parachute program that we had bought. I don't remember if Tanya said it was 35,000 last year and then 51,000 this year or if there, like, and addition to 51,000? If, if it was, or if it was 35,000 and that's it? So I don't know, I can't, like, what is, what was the complete purchase price? And is there a monthly, like, is there, do we have to pay for monthly or anything like that? Or is this one and done sort of thing? I see Laura's popped up, so thanks.
I will.
To be supportive, thank you. Okay.
I'm not sure if Tanya wants to pop on with the exact numbers. Probably we had a bit of an abridged amount the first year because we were, I don't know that we went full open. So that might have been the first amount, that lower, that lower 35,000. But then the actual cost is probably closer to 50,000 and it's just a one, like it's an annual payment. There's not anything, as far as I understand, nothing in addition to that, like on a monthly basis. But Tanya is more the word there.
And, and I will correct myself through the Chair. Chantel, I will correct myself that the prorated amount for 23-24, as we didn't put it into play until almost February, was 8,500. So 32 was inflated, my apologies. So 8,500. However, the annual contractual obligation is, is estimated right now at 50. So that is the annual amount going forward. And then the fund is 51,000 itself currently. So the, the open parachute basically is being absorbed by this, is being supported by this fund.
That's right. The 51,000 for the, I can't remember what it's called.
Mental health grant.
Mental health fund, that's right. Okay, so we're gonna be using the mental health fund for the annual fee for open parachute.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And, and here's just to, perhaps I can add too, is I was just looking at the actually agreement with them for this year and to serve 15,000 students, but again, prorated and not, you know, expanded to wide use. So that was the reason for that. But I also want to express appreciation for the work of Mr. Merchant particularly, but everyone does, is kind of tasked with reviewing the use of licensing agreements on a yearly basis to make sure that we're actually, number one, using them. Number two, that we're just not accepting inflated, you know, increased costs for the sake of it. And we, we have some very talented negotiators in, in our school district. And Mr. Merchant is right at the top about making sure that we're calling people out when they try to charge us too much for a service that we're not actually necessarily using all of. So there's due diligence there for, for certain. And I think actually this was a good example, at least in year one.
Great. And I don't know, Flora, if you could, if you could perhaps tell me, and because we weren't sure last time and you might not know the answer even this time, might not have that clear plan yet, totally understand. How are we getting, receiving the data from that and how that's kind of working for, using that strategy for, within our strategic plan for mental health? And how, like, how is it going? Well, you know, are, are we using it? Are we, like, I know that's one data point we could probably be using is how many people are using it, right? But what are some of the other things that we're gonna be using to, to verify if this is really, like, this is gonna be really impactful? And stuff like that to gauge that.
I love, I love that question. Super important question. It probably will, we're at the very beginning stages, like the, we've only just, we're given the ability to pilot, pilot it, I think initially. And so probably not until this coming school year are we gonna be able to, to sort of use it district-wide. And it essentially, we're looking at having mental health and teaching about mental health become a responsibility, collective ownership, if you will, of everyone, sort of tier one to tier three. And so all of the, I think it's just a little bit early and premature for us to know the answers to all of those super important questions. But certainly, in the course of our regular business, you know, in the coming school year, that can be something that can be a presentation if that's, you know, a motion is made or what have you. Yeah, it's not a small amount of money and absolutely we want to know kind of how, is that, what kind of uptake it has? And, and we can certainly look at some of the metrics.
Right, yeah. It'll take some time for people to even like start using it and to understand it and, and grow with it. So yeah, maybe next year might be, or next school year sort of thing would apparently be a, a good time next year. Actually, now that, oh my goodness, we're May. Okay, sorry. Just realized what time we are this year. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? One once, one twice? Okay, I don't see any other questions. So before we entertain the motion, I'd just like to confirm that all trustees are in possession of a digital or written copy of the School District Number 68, and I'm a Lady Smith Annual Budget Bylaw for the Fiscal Year 2024-2025. If you could please indicate so in the chat. And also I'd like to inform the public that the bylaws included in this evening's agenda on page 41, which is available online. Just let me, this whole bunch of trustees who are popping out here. I have a little flurry missing here. So Leanna here? I can't see everybody on my screen, so it's a bit tricky. Chair, are you able to help me double check that everyone has indicated yes in the chat, please?
Well, I'm just checking with Leanna as well. She's on her phone, so it's a bit more difficult for her.
Thank you. So Chantel, is that a yes from you? You have it?
And we're good on Leanne's.
Yes.
You're good, Chantel. Okay. So that's all of us, I believe. Thank you. So now that we've got that out of the way, we are able to entertain the first motion that is in the agenda. That would be great, Mark, if you could read the motion. Go ahead, please.
Sure. So move that the Board of Education of School District 68 adopt the annual budget bylaw for fiscal year 2024-2025, cited as School District Number 68, the Nivola Lady Smith Annual Budget Bylaw for fiscal year 2024-2025, being a bylaw associated with the annual budget showing the estimated revenue and expense for the 2024-2025 year fiscal year and the total budget bylaw amount of 218. two hundred eighteen million, four hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. So moved.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have a seconder? Yeah, thank you, Leanne. Mark, would you like to motivate?
Um, I'd be repeating myself, Greg. Um, appreciative of, of staff, the effort that uh, Tanya and her team and Mark and everyone from, from ZAD Merchant all the way, you know, with his due diligence, making sure that we're not paying for things that uh, that the people are trying to get us to pay. All the way down to our boots-on-the-ground uh, staff who are turning off lights, who are everything. It all adds up to saving every nickel and dime. So for that, I think we're all appreciative as a board. And uh, for that, um, a lot of work has been put into this uh, budget. And as uh, Mark mentioned, we are pretty tight and because of some, some good work, uh, we managed to keep it pretty balanced and without having to cut like other districts are. So for that, very appreciative. I know it came out today that the Surrey, Surrey School District has been cutting uh, support staff and we don't want to go down that route, so. Yeah, so moved.
Thank you very much, Mark. Um, I just want to make sure, because I, I can't recall. Can you just confirm or Karen, perhaps did Mark read uh, right to the end, it read a first time this fifteenth day of May twenty-twenty-four? Either Mark or Karen.
I did not.
Okay, then perhaps can you read that part and just maybe ask the seconder to resecond it?
Right. So I saw move that what I said, I repeat, and I also add for, read for the first time this fifteenth day of May twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. I should have been paying closer attention when you read that first time. And that was reseconded by, thank you.
Good eyes, Greg.
Okay, so are there any further comments on first reading? Hearing none. Is there anybody opposed to the motion? If so, please type in the chat. Don't see anybody typing and there's nothing in the chat. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. So we do have a motion on the agenda for second reading. Would somebody like to read that? Go ahead, Mark.
Sure, um, that the Board of Education of School District number sixty-eight adopt the annual budget bylaw for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five cited as school district number sixty-eight and I'm a lady Smith annual budget bylaw for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Being a bylaw associated with the annual budget showing the estimated revenue and expense for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year and the total budget bylaw amount of two hundred eighteen million, four hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five fiscal year. Read a second time this fifteenth day of May twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, do we have a seconder? Yeah, Leanne seconded the motion. I'll come back to you, Mark. You don't have to speak, but you have a chance.
Um, I don't think I need to say anything that's already been said.
Thank you. Are there any comments or discussion on the motion? I don't see anybody typing and I don't see any comments in the chat, so the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Uh, thanks for your, for that this evening. So we'll move on to our last item, just entertaining a motion to adjourn. Moved by Naomi. We have a seconder. Seconded by Mark. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
United.